Aloha and welcome to the hearing with the Senate Committee on Economic Development and Tourism. Today is March 11, 2025. This is our 1:00 PM agenda, and we are in Conference Room 229. This hearing is being streamed live on YouTube. In the unlikely event that we must abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties, the committee will reconvene on Thursday, March 13, 2025, at 1:01 PM in Conference Room 229. This committee has a 90-minute time slot, so there will be a 1-minute time limit for all testifiers. Today's agenda includes five House bills and four GMs for various boards. First on the agenda, HB 934 relating to the Hawaii Broadband and Digital Equity Office. First up on the testimony is this. We have Lieutenant Governor Sylvia Lou.
Good afternoon, Chair and Vice Chair and committee members. This bill is, we have some suggested amendments, but we are in support of the original intent, and thank you for your assistance with this bill as well.
Thank you. Next up, Christine Sekuda testifying for Hawaii Office of Enterprise and Technology Services.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair members of the committee. Christine Sekuda, State Chief Information Officer. We humbly offer comments on this bill. We strongly support the ConnectCO initiative, and we believe firmly that everyone should have access to high-speed internet. We request full funding in order for the operations to be successful. Thank you very much. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Next up, Director Tokyoko with Department of Business and Economic Development.
Chair and Vice Chair, members of the committee, D.B.S. Antonin Collins.
Thank you. Next up, Randy Lyon, Cable Television Administrator, DCCA.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Kevin Nishimoto on behalf of Randy Lyon. We support this measure. We are offering some amendments to help consolidate all the various state responsibilities into one, but otherwise, we stand on our written testimony, and we'll be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Garrett Yoshimi testifying for University of Hawaii System.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Standing here in, representing the interests of the state in the implementation of the federal broadband funds and significant broadband funds in support of the bill. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Next up, Dane Tru Bartoldis testifying for Hawaii State Council of Developmental Disabilities.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, committee members. Savannah Puskas with the Hawaii State Council on Developmental Disabilities. Here on behalf of Dane Tru Bartoldis, we'll stand on our written testimony in support and are available for any questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up, Karen Polk testifying for Kapolei Chamber of Commerce.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Karen Polk, CEO of Kapolei Chamber of Commerce. We stand on our written testimony. We do have concerns regarding the language added in the HD-1, specifically the line that says excluding the deployment of broadband infrastructure for provision of retail service. We strongly support this measure. We strongly support, of course, digital equity and broadband, but we have some concerns with this language. We, you know, it doesn't align with the intent of this bill, and it could result in unintended consequences down the line. The bill itself does have checks and balances, including a committee, a steering committee, as to where those funds will go, and we suggest relying on that instead of having, including this language in the bill. Thank you.
Thank you.
If there are any questions.
Next up, Rich Bettini testifying for Hawaiian Comprehensive Center.
Yeah, signed up. Maybe I put his name. Aloha, Kako, and nice to see everyone. I really appreciate the time. So, we are, Hawaiian Co's Comprehensive Health Center is in support of the bill with an amendment. Same as Ms. Polk just mentioned, we are truly concerned about the amendment that was added, excluding broadband infrastructure for retail service. This really could, there is potential, like she said, for unintended consequences, which is squashing community-led innovative ways to address where we know there is a gap in our local, in our community, in our local communities, for those that are unsheltered and those that are living at or below the poverty level. For Hawaiian Co's Comprehensive, that 70% of our patient population live at, at or below the federal poverty level. And I will have to say that I also agree with the fact that there's already a clear framework in this bill that allows, who I believe, I'm very confident in my elected officials, to make the right decision for public interest and for local communities, and so I don't think there needs to be an addition there. So mahalo for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next up, Janine Tsuki testifying for Hawaiian Telcom with comments. Rebecca Lieberman, Director of Government Affairs for Charter Communications.
Good afternoon, Rebecca Lieberman with Charter Communications. I'm here to stand on my written testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Sean Takila-McLaughlin as an individual.
Aloha. Thank you for this opportunity, as brief as it is. I would just want to note that none of the testimony that you have written is available to the public right now, so we can't respond to any of the other testimony, where people stood on their written testimony. I also want to share with you that, in the big picture, I've been doing work across the nation in this regard. There are states that are successful, have two main tracks. One track that you're addressing today is rationalizing and making coherent the state's investment policies. What, how are you investing public funds, federal funds, state funds, community investments? The other, and I think it's very important what you're doing, and so I support this measure. I think you have to be careful that it's not anti-competitive as a result of the interventions of particular industry players, and I hope that you will attend to that. I think the other track that's really critical, that maybe we can work on next year, is doing the same kind of rationalization for the regulatory regime. These are essentially unregulated communication utilities. They have captured the DCCA and the PUC, and so you're dealing with industries that are not regulated, really.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Daniel Smith on Zoom. Go ahead, Daniel.
Yes, good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, committee members. I'm Dan Smith, and I strongly support this bill, but with the change made by HD-1 removed, I want to commend to you the written and oral testimony of West Coast Comprehensive Health Center and the Kapolei Chamber of Commerce. We need flexibility to implement projects, creative projects, and I have done those throughout the Central Pacific and for 23 years, the airplanes of Hawaiian Airlines. So restore the original language on projects. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, Kahili Swan on Zoom.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, committee members. I'm strong supporter of this measure because I use the broadband and data, and I strip store by suite. I live for my mom, and I pay my phone bills through Verizon. It's like $100,000 a month if you pass this bill, so I can get more discounted price, so I can use my internet. So this is my testimony, and please leave me if any question. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next up, Faith Twi Pulo Tu in support. Is there anybody else wishing to testify in support of the measure, sir?
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair. I'm Jack Lew, Administrator of SHIFDA. I would like to concur with the recommendation made by Hawaiian Co's Comprehensive Health Center and Kapolei Community Board. I think that additional language actually might limit some projects in rural areas that could be helpful for some, particularly for some patients that aren't going to have services otherwise, so I think that that change would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to testify on the measure? Seeing none, members, any questions? LG, please. Sorry. LG, since you have been instrumental in moving the state's broadband efforts forward, how will this bill and amendments you recommend strengthen our efforts?
Yeah, thank you for that. You know, thanks to the federal government, the state of Hawaii has or will be in a position to receive about $400, close to $500 million in broadband funding. The broadband plan is multifaceted, and you know, I mean, Chair, as your, you and your work of the Molokai community has been really significant in ensuring that we have broadband access throughout the entire state. So broadband infrastructure and broadband efforts are multifaceted. So one of them is to lay lines, undersea cable lines between the islands so that we can connect it. The second thing is getting devices to individuals who don't have devices, because during COVID, we understood that, you know, a lot of people, even if we have the lines, they don't have devices. The third thing, which is the most critical part, is the know-how. No matter how many devices you give out, no matter how many lines that we set up, if people don't know how to use broadband, then it's basically money wasted. So in order to do all that, it's consolidating some of the efforts into a broadband office. So that's why moving it under the CIO to ensure that we have a pretty good plan on what do we do with the undersea cable lines that is being laid using federal funds. If revenues are generated, what are we going to use that money for? So it's no longer a digital equity mandate, it's broadband, because it's going to be expensive. Would we use that for navigators? So for instance, to hire individuals who will teach people how to use the broadband? Or is it to defray people's internet costs as what was the Affordable Connectivity Program? There are so many things that we can do, and this effort will help streamline and ensure that we provide the services for our very, especially in our rural communities.
So, so the navigator part of what your amendment request was, does the navigator part of it also ensure, or is it a separate pot of funding on the infrastructure when you look at it?
Correct. So the navigators are individuals. So for instance, if you go to the Apple Store, you can ask one of the geniuses to figure out how to use your iPhone or iPad. So these navigators will be stationed in public places, including the libraries, to teach people how to use the broadband service. So right now, we have, we're working with the library system to have individuals to answer questions. So individuals who are supposed to fill out online application, you know, they can call these navigator services to help you through some of these things. So you know, I mean, we're entering into a very exciting time in our state where we can provide services to individuals who never had services before.
Thank you, LG. Anybody else? Any questions?
So, under this bill, we're creating the Digital Equity Specialist Fund?
So one of the recommendations that we have is we would like to, as opposed to a special fund, it would be a revolving fund. So the revolving fund, the intent of the revolving fund is money is generated from leasing out the broadband infrastructure lines. If we generate income, then the state can figure out what to do with the income and then give it back into the, use it for community benefit, whether it's to hire more people, to teach people how to use the internet, or defray people's internet costs, or in certain situation, work with the communities to see what is the best use of those revenues. So because of that, it will be a revolving fund.
So what happens when there's not enough money in the revolving fund?
I think, in this situation, I mean, we will be limited by the amount that is generated from income. So it's never a situation where we have a plan and we try to figure out, you know, we have a grandiose plan and say, hey, you know what, we cannot do all these things. We'll always be restricted by the income that is generated. So for instance, you know, the estimated income that could potentially be generated is about $1 million a year from lease terms. So from the $1 million, what are we going to use that money for?
Okay, because you know, my experiences with these funds, at some point, they get depleted, and then they come in and ask the legislature for funding. I mean, we've seen that with the cancer center, the tobacco tax, and so forth, and so.
I definitely agree, and that's why I think it should be a revolving fund. It should be the amount that is generated, and if there's no amount that's generated, then you know, I mean, there's, there has to be a plan that is clearly tied to amount that is generated. So the amount that is generated, the state can figure out what to do. So it should be limited to that. It's not the intent where we have this plan, and then this revolving fund or the special fund will support all these future expenses.
I don't think we put that somewhere in the intent, because you know how intent changes, and then you come in and change the bill, because you can't, now it's not funded, so forth. So you don't anticipate, other than the federal funds that come in, that there's going to be a lot of state funding that's going to go into this?
No, and then so that's why even the navigator positions, we're not asking for state funds. We are asking for positions, and so we're hoping that we maximize the federal funds. And once those positions are established, once the revenues are generated, then perhaps we can supplant that with the revenues.
Are we expecting more funding from the feds in light of what's going on? And are we guaranteed we're going to get these funds, and then we, are you going to keep needing an infusion of federal funds? Or this is going to be it?
Yeah, you know, I think for now, what we know of as of right now is this is limited to what it is. So we at least know potentially what is the amount that is coming to the state. For now, there is commitment by the federal government that for the infrastructure funding, this is something that is ongoing. So thanks to Garrett Yoshimi, thanks to our broadband office, they've been in constant communication with the federal offices to ensure that those things continue.
Okay, last question. Is the CIO is the one that's going to implement this?
The CIO, this, we envision this to be an attached agency, working closely with the CIO. We do not expect the CIO to oversee the function of this office, because although it is under the CIO, because we have to work in conjunction with the state's IT infrastructure, we expect that will be working in conjunction.
So the governor appoints the head of this office?
Correct, correct.
And with confirmation?
One of the positions, including Mr. Chung Chang's position, is with confirmation, advice and consent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, moving on to, thank you. Moving on to HB 97. First up, Jerry Bump from Acting Insurance Commissioner.
Hi there. Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Kathleen, sitting in for Acting Commissioner, Insurance Commissioner Jerry Bump. We do stand on our comments, and we request that a change be made just to be in line with the licensing requirements. Very important. Thank you. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Next up, Duke DeHaas, Vice President and Culture of AGA Service Company Alliance on Zoom. Alliance on Zoom. IT.
Yes, they're available.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. Duke DeHaas with Allianz here in Richmond, Virginia. I'm also here on behalf of the U.S. Travel Insurance Association, for which I'm law and co-chair. Thank you, Chair and co-chair, for the opportunity to appear before you. Sorry, very sorry I'm not there in person. Look forward to coming to your beautiful state in October. Stand on our testimony and happy to answer any questions. And again, thank you for the opportunity, and thank you for your time considering travel insurance.
Thank you. Next up, Michael Bryan, U.S. Travel Insurance Association and American Property Casualty Insurance Association on Zoom.
Not available on Zoom, Chair.
Anybody else wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none, members, any questions?
Insurance.
Insurance, please. Commissioner DCCA.
Is there a problem now that, the reason for this bill?
I'm sorry?
Is there a problem that we have that warrants this measure?
You know, perhaps not from the insurance division's perspective, but it does sound like, you know, industry would prefer framework, and that's fine, you know, to have some type of framework in place for this product, the travel product.
By putting together, I guess I'm trying to find out what, why it's necessary. We put so many regulations and so many frameworks together. I'm just wondering.
If it's a, if it's a bill in search of a problem, or it's looking to fix something that's not a problem?
The industry just wants to have more control. You know, I don't know. That's why I'm asking. I've not heard of any issues or problems in this area.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it, I think maybe industry is, you know, maybe can better speak to why they want the bill. I mean, in some ways, we view the bill as just putting into statute a lot of the things that, you know, everybody already does. We don't have a problem with this particular product. We don't have a problem with the industry, with any of it. So, but you know, nevertheless, it is a NAIC model. A lot of states have adopted it in various versions, and so, you know, I think maybe they would be the better entity to ask.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So is there someone from?
Can you come, I got, I just like follow up. So the bill establishes a new regulatory framework for the sale of travel insurance. So if this is needed, how will it benefit consumers if the bill passes? And do you see any problems in administering this as a new law?
Well, I think as with any framework, the intent and the purpose is for uniformity of the product, also with certain, you know, notification requirements and things of that sort. In terms of the implementation, as I said, it does appear to put into statute what I think the industry already does fairly well, you know. So there's that. And, you know, if they have an issue with licensing, maybe they would be the better ones to speak to it, but we're, yeah, yeah. I don't know if that answers your question.
I would assume you need additional resources if you had to.
Well, this, this particular bill does not have a rate review component. It just has a, you know, a form review component, which we do anyway, you know, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I get somebody from the insurance, either Duke DeHaas or Michael Bryan?
Hi, I'm sorry. Could, can you hear me?
Yes. So why is this bill needed? Is there a problem that you folks experienced, or is there something that we don't know about?
No, not at all. Well, we do think it's needed. Hawaii is a great state, and there is a limited lines model that goes back a decade that Hawaii has not enacted yet, and the regulatory framework being consistent around the country, we think is good for consumers and industry and regulators, as we heard the division just testify. I'm so happy to answer detailed questions, but 37 states have already done this, and we are just seeking to have this in place in all 50 states.
How does it benefit, how does it benefit consumers?
It benefits consumers by enshrining consumer protections that are in the model into Hawaii law. I can give a couple of examples, but it would be sort of left to the Unfair Trade Practices Act general provisions if these consumer protections were not included. So I can give a couple of examples of ones that are in the legislation, but that is just one example.
But aren't they already protected?
Yes, there are many protections already, but there are actually specific ones in this legislation that are not in Hawaii law currently.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, moving on to HB 448 relating to technology enablement. First up, Sandy Konemori testifying for Hawaii Technology Development Corporation.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Wayden O'Neil sitting here for Sandy Konemori. HCDC stands on our written testimony for this bill. Just wanted to say thank you for hearing this bill, as, as you know, technology is a big part of our state economy, and, you know, we're super excited to be able to possibly get tech enablement out to various industries like tourism, like fashion, like food, and various other industries that we really think that will help leverage the statewide economic impact leveraging technology. So I'm here to answer any questions, and thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Next up, Daniel Nohopie testifying for Hawaii Tourism Authority.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, members. On behalf of Daniel, he's out sick today. We stand on our written testimony. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next up, Sharon Menor testifying on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce Hawaii.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Tom O'Boyle, Chamber of Commerce, in strong support. Here for any questions. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next up, Lauren Zerbo testifying for Hawaii Food Industry Association.
Thank you, Chair. We'll stand on our testimony in strong support. Aloha.
Thank you. I have Maui Chamber of Commerce Pam Tumpap in support. Michael Matsumoto testifying for SSFM International in support. Eric Dill for Ko'olau Distillery also in support. Summer Shigi testifying for Ten Tomorrow in support. And Shinoa Farnsworth for Blue Startups in support. Anybody else wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none, members, any questions? Senator Wakai?
Wayne?
Hi, good afternoon, Senator.
Trying to understand the scope of this, this measures. You're going to be expected to create like a platform and then help Hawaii's small businesses sell their goods or services to visitors?
So I think it's a variety of different types of technologies. So we have like digital platforms, which includes e-commerce, which includes ARV, our visual reality. So I think right now, a lot of our partners, including, you know, with HTA and some of our other chamber partners have identified problems. And I think as far as HCD is concerned, we need, we have the know-how. Well, our partners have the know-how how to leverage technology, whether it's fashion, whether it's food, to really leverage this technology to really try and grow the state economy, right? Because right now, we are in a situation where we have a shortage of labor. We need to understand how we can leverage some of the new up-and-coming technologies to really leverage our small businesses to get, to get them to be more globally competitive. So it'll be a wide range of different types of technologies, whether it's robotics, whether it's digital platforms, whether it's e-commerce, right? So I think it's going to be determined of what the need is and what problem. We're not going to just go out there and do stuff. It's really about addressing problems and see how we can leverage technology to fix those problems.
So right now, the bill has no specific dollar appropriation. Can you just give us a ballpark figure as to how much you think this is going to cost us?
So we're going to leverage our, our federal program, which is the NIST MEP program, which helps manufacturers, and whatever we can get to help leverage and to match that, that would be, I mean, right now, if we envision it would be, you know, to do training, statewide training for rural support, especially on the neighbor islands. So would, you know, again, have to include consultants.
So what's a dollar figure?
It's kind of hard to say at this point, but I mean, whatever the legislators are able to provide would be helpful to, as far as the expansion of the program.
You know, as this program potentially rolls out, are you going to make a concerted effort to make sure that local companies are the ones that are contracted to do the work? I mean, what bothers me is that we do all of these software development projects, and then mainland software companies are doing it. The CIO just had an auction site, you know, for like confiscated items that the state sells, and that was given to a mainland company. Last, or two weeks ago, we had the app for the digital ag form. That was given to a mainland company. With this program, are you anticipating that you're going to actually utilize local companies to help promote?
That would definitely be our priority is to do our local first. So we have, as some of our other HD programs, right? They need to be Hawaii-based businesses, but it all depends, right? I think there's some technologies that aren't here yet in Hawaii. So at that point, we would have to probably want to partner with a local business, right? And have them bring in their expertise from other parts of outside the state. But our, our goal is to, yes, partner with local companies that can help to deliver the technology piece for this, for this bill.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Senator Kim.
I'm a little troubled by your response.
I'm a little troubled by your response and your answer when asked by Senator Kai how much money you need. I mean, how much we're going to give you? I mean, what kind of program, what, well, no, let me finish. What kind of program and plan you have that you have no idea is just how much you're willing to give us? I mean, to me, that's doesn't mean that you, you kind of know what this is going to do.
So I think, I think our initial one conversations, again, we would have to consult with our, our DBED executive office. But I think the initial was like about two hundred thousand would be a, a roundabout so that we can actually have and pay our local consultant, as Senator Wakai talked about, using local, um, resources to really help develop. Especially when there's going to be travel involved, right? We have, we want to do.
So what's the return on investment? What, what, what do you folks estimate is the return on investment?
So the, the, the return investment is we want to make sure that these companies are going to grow their local workforce, right? Using technology and also paying for higher paying jobs.
And have you, have you surveyed these, um, companies and have they told you that?
We have, yes, we have. So we've, we've had, um, from our other HCDC programs that we do have surveys and results. And saying that part of some of the help that they need is tech enablement.
Tech enablement for what? For this particular purpose or tech enablement period?
Tech enablement to grow their business, right? How do we, how do we grow, um, to make their business more globally competitive using technology?
Cause you're tech, you're specifically talking about tourism sector, so.
That includes tourism sector, that is correct. So how do we leverage like app, mobile apps?
No, I understand tourism. I'm just trying to connect when they say they need help with their, um, with their global, um, outreach and so forth, reach. I'm wondering how much of that is actually tourism, how much of that is actually just?
So we will be doing some assessment. Obviously, we're not going to just go out and roll up programs. It is going to be some assessment with data to show that these are definite tech enablement issues that, you know, we can help, which includes broadband, right? For a lot of our rural areas, we need broadband. So it's how do we get that?
Do you do that first or do you get the money first?
We, we also, the assessment has already been somewhat proliferated through our partners with the chamber, right? They have the chamber blueprint. We have the SEDS report that, um, our economic development communities do. So we're going to use that as a baseline, as a starting point.
And is this a one-time, one-time ask?
We're hoping that we would be able to continue depending on, again, the results that we can show you that this program is successful.
For how long? I mean, again, you know, I, I, I see a half-baked plan in program right now, so.
Understand.
Unless you guys come up something more definitive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, any other questions? Um, seeing none. I'm going to move on to HB four, five, five relating to small business loans. First up Director Tokioka with, uh, Department Business Economic Development.
I'm Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Uh, DBED will stand on its testimony in support.
Thank you. Next up HB four, five, uh, sorry. Next up Allison Escato, Attorney General, on Zoom. Oh, right here.
Good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. This has been a written testimony recommending inclusion of an explanation as to why a special fund is necessary as opposed to a general fund appropriation. And the reason for this is just to, um, comply with the technical requirements of the statute to create special funds. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up, uh, Director of Budget Finance Luis Oliverio, with comments. Uh, next up Joshua Wish on Holomore Collaborative.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, uh, Committee Members. I'm Joshua Wish with Holomore Collaborative. I largely stand on my, uh, written testimony. Um, just wanted to summarize that the basic goal of this program is that there are programs, um, within the department right now that help with small businesses, but there aren't really many that help with startup businesses, the ones that specifically have some of the biggest problem getting access to capital, uh, to gear up. And so this would provide a method to fill that gap a little bit as we're trying to help launch new, uh, small businesses in the state. Thanks very much. I appreciate you considering the vote.
Thank you. Next up Sharon Menor testifying for Chamber of Commerce Hawaii.
Good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Tom O'Boyle, Chamber of Commerce, we stand in support.
Thank you. Next up Tammy Amachika testifying for Tax Foundation of Hawaii on Zoom.
Good afternoon. This is Jade McMillan on behalf of the Tax Foundation, uh, for tax, for Tammy Amachika. Um, we have some comments on the measure. Uh, generally we are not big fans of special funds. Um, in our comments, we noted that, um, we don't see that there's any indication that the proposed fund can be self-preserving. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up, uh, Lauren.
Thank you Chair. Uh, we will stand on our testimony in strong support, Mahalo.
Thank you. Um, in support Pam Tumpap testifying for behalf of Maui Chamber of Commerce. Mary James from Mauna Op in support. Michael Kani, Hawaii Community Foundation in support. Mike, Mike Pich testifying for title guarantee in support. Jason Fujimoto and Brandon Caruso, uh, testifying also in support. Anybody else wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none, members, any questions?
Uh, yeah, I guess a question to DBED.
Senator Kim.
Am I asking the wrong question? Um, so yeah, why special funds?
Um, it's a loan program and in theory they'll be repaying the loan. And for that money to come back into the fund so that then we could re-loan to other companies and keep this going, that, uh, that would be the intent. Currently, uh, we have our CBED program and we already have a revolving loan fund and it's been very successful. We've done a drawdown of a million and a quarter dollars and, uh, from federal government. And we already have three hundred thousand dollars back in to the fund, which we're re-loning. And so that would be the intent of this.
Yeah, but we all know startups. I mean, success of startups are a percentage. And so what happens when this fund is, there's a replenishment?
Well, I think we're supposed to write administrative rules here and I think we would be very, very thoughtful on how we did that. And, uh, how we were lending the money out. You know, we'd be investing in people, entrepreneurs. Um, I think it would be a very sort of a competitive thing, just because it'd be basically based on business plan and entrepreneur. You know, not a, a company that's been in revenue for a year or two years like our regular CBED program. So I think if we did a good job with that, hopefully we would keep, uh, defaults to a minimum. You know, that would be our intent. That would be our goal to make sure that they could repay the loan. And also for a small company, by doing a loan like this, they could, uh, get credit history and grow. And then maybe go onto a CBED loan or actually a bank loan at some point for expansion.
What kind of funding are we talking about?
Uh, I think it's for five hundred thousand dollars to start out. And then we were also asking for, uh, uh, a loan officer position.
I'm sorry?
Oh, we were asking for a loan officer position. Right now, we would use sort of the resources we're already using for our CBED revolving loan fund. We're like pushing almost twenty loans now. Um, but we are going to be sort of stretched a little thin. We could really use a loan officer position.
Uh, Senator Wakai?
Just want to address the AG's commentary that, uh, they don't think it's, a special fund is appropriate. So could we change that to a revolving fund and that would?
Yes, I, I sometimes get confused because in the past they said revolving funds, they said you could call them a special fund. I'm not sure, but it would be money coming back into the fund. Yes.
Right. Okay, so we could change that to address the AG's concerns. Okay.
Uh, can, can you come over real quick? I, I just got a quick, so, um, is it the intent? I mean, have you guys considered contracting this loan program to a financial institution?
For our CBED loan program, we basically, uh, leverage our money when we do a loan. And so we usually put in half the money and then we usually have a co-lending partner. So we work with CDFIs, we work with the Hawaii Community Reinvestment Corp., we work with Feed the Hunger Fund. Uh, we work with Y-Night Economic Development Council has a bikini fund and we work with other organizations. So we could do co-lending and I think the bill allows us to do that. And so we would try to leverage our money and make it go, uh, twice as far. And also those people can sort of help with some of the underwriting and loan servicing and things.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other questions? Seeing none. Moving on to HB one, four, zero, five relating to permits. Uh, first up, uh, DBED Director Tokioka.
Good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. DBED, Dane Wicker, Deputy Director of DBED. And we stand on our testimony in support, uh, with the amendments.
Thank you. Uh, next up testifying for Pacific Resource Partnership, Andrew Perre.
Chair, Vice Chair, Members of Pacific Resource Partnership, we stand, uh, in support.
Thank you. Next up Sharon Menor testifying for Chamber of Commerce Hawaii.
Good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Chamber of Commerce, we stand in support. Here for any questions?
Thank you. Uh, next up Lauren Zerbo testifying for Hawaii Food Industry Association on Zoom.
Thank you Chair. Um, we will stand on our testimony in strong support. Um, as permitting is, uh, really important to our members and it's definitely driven up the cost of food locally.
Thank you. Uh, so I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight people also testifying in support. Anybody else, uh, in the room wanting to testify in support of the measure? Seeing none, members, any questions?
Yeah, questions for DBED.
DBED please.
So this establishes a whole new, a whole new framework for?
A whole new framework for an existing, uh, section in HRS. So we looked at this facilitated permit process. Um, there's no resources or staff currently within DBED. We could not find a prior project that used this process.
But this would be what permits? City permits?
So that is unclear. What we, it's looking at the bill and trying to understand what projects could come our way. It could be projects that deal with several state agencies as well as running across DBED programs, whether it's OPSD or HHFDC. So I don't know clearly yet what those projects would be.
So permits for what?
I, that's, I don't know what those projects are right now. And looking at this bill, it's, it's very broad.
Yeah, I mean, I can't understand what, are we making a construction permits or are we making zoning?
I would think it's something in looking at, in looking at potentially some possible projects, it could be construction housing, which if it's under HHFDC or HCDA, there is, they have their processes.
But you don't have the, you don't have the expertise, right?
No, so if we were to undertake, that's why we're asking for those amendments and the resources, to do a digital platform and this one person to administer the permit process.
I mean, if you don't have the expertise, you have no idea what kind of permit, how are you going to, um, s- s- put this, put this whole organization together?
That's what the amendments were asking for, is to bring that expertise.
Creating a whole, I mean, what kind of cost are we talking about?
So I, I understand there's, there is, the communities are asking for quicker ways to do permitting. So I, again, I don't know what those projects are. We're looking at this bill on how we can implement if we're asked to from the legislature. And to do that, we put in amendments on how we would stand up this program. No, it's not.
It's, uh, it seems like we're creating a, I don't know. Having been in the city, having been the chair of the zoning committee for that many years, and I'm looking at this and I can't make his or tails and I'm sure the public can, as to, and you yourself don't know what kind of permits.
We don't know what projects specifically yet.
For per- permits and, uh, projects run the gamut in the state. So, I mean.
So it's not, yeah, the, the, it's already existing statute. Or if we were to utilize it, we took a look at what the statute would allow for. Again, what type of projects were not clear yet, but if we were able, if we were to implement this.
Statue doesn't necessarily, I don't know when that statue was passed and I don't know what the intent was for that statue back then. But just because there is a statue, maybe it's, we shouldn't have a statue.
The, the, in doing some discussion, we couldn't find anything on the books, but looking at some discussion, one of the potential projects for the creation could have been the under-see cable or broadband at the time.
Okay, so that was specific. So it wasn't necessarily made.
Does it, but, but the, those projects were never submitted or moved forward or not.
And again, an unintended consequence of some of these statues that we passed because there's no opposition or, you know, you just put things on the books because it's, it's scary to think that we're going to shore up this entire, uh, on a whim, I don't want to say a whim, on an idea that there's going to be a project. You have no idea what kind of project. No idea what kind of expertise you're going to need. And yet you're going to put money, taxpayers' dollars and positions.
We, we put the amendments in there as an ask from the legislature. If we were to implement, this is what we would do to implement. So that's our testimony. Right. I do hear your, I do hear your concerns.
Thank you.
Okay, after that brutal response, anybody else have any questions? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to, Senator Wa, you have any questions?
No.
Okay, seeing none, let's move on to, uh, GM five, eleven, uh, submitting for consideration and confirmation to the Board of Directors of the Hawaii Tourism Authority Governor Taro Nomi Lisa Paulson for term two expire six, thirty, twenty, twenty-seven. First up Daniel Nohopie testifying on behalf of HTA.
Chair, Vice Chair, Members calling and standing on behalf of HTA in support.
Thank you. Next up Director Tokioka on behalf of DBED.
Chair, we stand on our testimony in support.
Thank you. Uh, next up, uh, CEO of HTA and, uh, President, uh, in support Mufi Hanaman. Uh, next up Marsha Sharp, uh, testifying for Maui Food Bank in support Karen Nakaoaka. Uh, HVCB member in support Joe Chi, Maui Food Bank Treasurer in support. Brian Etheridge, Maui Food, Maui Food Bank Board Member in support. Gilkeed Agarwal in support, Michelle McLean in support, Karen S. Carlson in support. John Pele Maui Hotel and Lodging Association Executive Director in support. Moana Lutley also in support. Anybody else in the room wishing to testify on the individual? Seeing none, um, if Lisa you would, uh, come up and, uh, introduce yourself and give us a brief background. Thank you.
Aloha Committee Members. Uh, my name is Lisa Paulson and I've been blessed to live on the island for thirty years, the island of Maui, and to have many, um, positions both with government and nonprofit and always able to work with the community. Um, strong believer in giving back and, uh, I look forward to serving in this capacity. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, members, uh, any questions for the appointee? Senator Kim.
Hi, good afternoon and thank you so much for being willing to serve. Um, you've been on the board serving now for?
Since January.
Since January of this year?
Correct, yes.
And so far, um, you've been to about two, three meetings or?
Three board meetings and then a couple of standing committee meetings.
And what have been your, what have been your experience and how has this, um, serving time fit in with what it, what you had expected or what you thought was going to be like?
Um, in my previous position, I worked very closely with a lot of the HTA staff. So, um, it has met, you know, what I thought would be, um, discussed and working forward. And there are some issues that I think that we need to work on as a board that the community is asking us to. So I look forward to working on those areas like destination management and give back to the community.
Okay, um, in your, in your questionnaire or response that you gave to the committee, you talked a lot about balancing and you talked a lot about, um, cultural tourism, eco, eco, ecotourism, conservation, supporting local businesses, sustained visitor management. Uh, so how do you feel about the current allocation that HTA put forth for, uh, the dollars that they are given?
The dollars that they have right now?
The budget. So how do, how do you feel about that allocation?
Um, I, I feel strongly that they are going to put it to good use. I mean, and there could always be additional funds, especially for tourism destination management. I do believe the destination management as put forth for this fiscal year, they do have the funds.
Okay, so do you feel, are you satisfied with the allocations on how it's being distributed?
I am satisfied, yes.
Okay, because you talked a lot about balance. So let me just go over this with you. So branding and marketing, do you know how much percentage that is, that is given out of the budget?
Out of the entire state budget?
No, out of the HTA budget.
I do not.
Okay, do you know how much is for regenerative, regen- regenerative tourism development?
I don't have those percentages on the top of my mind. I have dollar amounts.
But you're aware of what's going on?
Yes, yes.
Okay, because I look at it, it isn't balanced to me. So I'm just concerned whether or not, you know, when you sit on the board and you know, and I've read your, your, um, questionnaires and it seems like it came straight out of AI. It doesn't give me a sense of what you yourself are aware and what you're contributing and what you can contribute. Cause you look at, you look at that allocation and sixty-two percent is branding and marketing. Destination stewardship community is twelve percent. General tourist, tourism is six percent. You know, I mean, it doesn't seem balanced at all. So it's, it sounds good what you're saying, but I don't know in practice. And you know, it's not just you. I mean, over the years, board members. I mean, over the years, board members come sit before us and tell us all these great things. And they sit there, and a lot of times I read the minutes, and it just seems like a lot of just, you know, everybody go along to get along, and I don't see a lot of changes. And, you know, and I always, when, when you come back for reconfirmation is when I look at your record and I go over things, because it's very difficult, your first time out, as to what it is that you're going to accomplish and what you hope to accomplish, so.
Right. And, and from my perspective right now, being from Maui, I do see the benefit of having a lot of money go towards branding programs. We're, we're not doing well in the county right now. Our community, a lot of people have lost their jobs, and many had two, three jobs, and now they have one. And so from my other perspective, my job, I see more and more people that are needing food assistance. So the branding is very important, because we do need to be top of mind, especially with our other Sun and Sand destinations that are, that are doing really good at, you know, getting their government to subsidize them, so. But I do, as a board member, do want to bring that balance. I've only had the chance in three meetings, so I'm trying to be respectful and watch how things are being done. And I will fight for the little guy, I promise you.
So what do you think is HTA's weaknesses? Or what do you think there are areas in which can improve?
There are many. I, I believe that there are a lot of staff positions that are vacant right now, and they are struggling to, to do a lot of the work that they need to do. We also are, we are needing the finalization of our CEO of the organization. I think that that would help us with strong leadership and leading us into the future. The other things that we need to do is we need to listen to the community to a greater extent. There is a lot going on, especially with the forthcoming federal cutbacks. It's going to even hurt our community more, and so there need to be greater dialogues.
Do you think that it's, it was a good move to have HTA take so long into getting a CEO, getting a leader?
Personally, yes. But now that I'm on the board, I do see that the struggles that they've had with, with some, if I can say bureaucratic maneuverings.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome, Senator Wakai.
Thank you for stepping forward, Lisa. I have long admired your leadership on Maui. Long before HTA talked about Kuliata and Malama campaigns, you were there when Maui was going through some very anti-tourism sentiment, right? There's moratoriums, no more hotel rooms, there were grassroots organizations that were gurgling, that were pretty anti-tourism. Tell us about how that has prepared you to now take on a larger responsibility for the state as we go down the road of Malama and Kuliata.
Yeah, thank you for the question. I believe we have, it is our Kuliata to do a better job in educating the benefits of the industry and the visitor industry as a whole. When we had a lot of that anti-tourism sentiment, it was, it was, it was our fault. We didn't do a good enough job in telling our story and the jobs that we support, the benefits that we support, and the farmers, the ranchers, the fishermen, all of that, that trickles down, the small businesses. So we, we had to step up greater efforts. It's not perfect. We still need to do a better job in that area.
So as, in follow-up to Senator Kim's questions, which we all want to see someone who knows, understands the balance between economic development as well as preservation of our culture and, and environment. Your past experiences actually provide you a kind of a unique perspective, because you were able to find that balance in Maui. And I don't hear any anti-tourism sentiments today based on, you know, this is pre-wildfire time period, but you actually helped Maui create that balance between economic development and the preservation of our culture and environment, correct?
Yes, yes. I worked very strongly with the community. We brought a lot of our community activists and community stakeholders to the table. And then I continued that when I worked with Mayor Victorino. We had a robust group that met and discussed areas that were hotspots. And that's kind of that beginning of the list that ended up in the destination management plans.
Thank you. So, so Lisa, first of all, thank you for wanting to serve, and you, you have your hands full. You know, along the lines of what Senator Wakai has said, I know you have worked on, under many mayors in Maui. Your extension out to La Na'i and Molokai during the charity walk time, and the Raishto nations have been, you know, super instrumental. You know, as we were very challenged to have meetings after the fire in Lahaina, as we brought the businesses together after we had tended to the residents and their needs. I said, you know, at that point, you know, you, you had stuck out. You know, you had helped assist Director Tokioke as part of the commission and so forth. How do you feel that your, you know, the resources that you brought to the table have helped you in now serving in this position as an HTA board member?
So, so far, I've been able to kind of give boots-on-the-ground perspective when we've been discussing some of the branding efforts. You know, recently, I brought to light that a lot of our Canadians are our number one visitor for the island of Maui, and that's because a lot of them have invested in time shares. And because of the goings-on at the federal level, they're encouraged not to travel to the United States. And that is going to have a very detrimental effect to us. I've also brought to light the fact that many of our farmers and ranchers and fishermen are still suffering from the downturn turn in some of our restaurants, our smaller businesses that were buying, you know, produce and, and protein from them. And we are trying to step in as the food bank and assist with that, but we always want to make sure that the little guy has a voice in the room, and I hope I can bring that as a board member to the table.
So can you also share with me during the time as we were dealing with the fire and the recovery of many upcountry, in my district as well as in Lahaina? You know, at that time, I think we were at a crossroads. Can you, can you tell me, you received an award, and it was a prestigious award you received during that time. Can you tell us what that award was?
Sure, sure. Try not to get emotional. So the, the night of the fires, I actually was on the phone quite a bit with, with Kalani here. And we, we stood up immediately, I knew from my crisis management background and working in the emergency management office, that we needed to evacuate those residents. I wasn't sure where the fire was going to terminate, if at all. And a lot of our visitors were trying to get into cars and go the backside of the island, Kahakalua way. And that was very incredibly dangerous at night. So we stood up in evacuation right away with our transportation partners and the emergency management team. And also in working with the state government and Jimmy's office, Dibet. And we were able to evacuate twelve thousand visitors out of Kaanapali and the Napili and the Kahana area. Within three days, we got the majority of them out to the airport. Didn't make the airport staff very happy, because they all had, they had an onslaught. But they had no power, they had no internet, they had no access to hot food. And we also needed to start working on getting those rooms ready for housing our Kamai.
Can you name that award that you received?
Yeah, it was USA Today. My gosh, now I've, fifty, no, that's the other one. Woman of the Year, sorry, in twenty twenty-four. Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? See none, ah, thank you.
Thank you.
Can we move on to GM six one five? Submitting for consideration and confirmation to the Board of Directors of the Hawaii Tourism Authority, Governor Tauri Nomi Christian West, for term to expire six thirty twenty twenty-eight. First testifier, Daniel Nohopi, Hawaii Tourism Authority.
Chair, Vice Chair members, Kalani Wadichteya on behalf of Daniel, in support.
Thank you. Next up, Director Tokioke, on behalf of Dibet.
Chair, Daniel, Director Dibet, standing on behalf of Dibet.
Thank you. Next up, UPW Kalani Warner.
Chair, Kalani, UPW, on behalf of State Department of Labor.
Thank you. Next up, Christian from University of Hawaii Professional Assembly, in support, in person, maybe not. Mufi Hanaman, President and CEO, Hawaii Tourism, Hawaii Lodging and Tourism Association, in support. Kate Watanabe, testifying on United Care Local Five, in support. Randy Pera, FLCIO, in support. Randy Pera, HGA, in support. Anna Tua Sosopo, operating engineer, Local Three, in support. Troy Benavides, testifying IBW Local One Three Five Seven, in support. Bronson Silva for Democratic Party of Hawaii, in support. Damian Kim, testifying for IBW One One Eight Six, in support. Is there anybody else in this room wishing to testify on behalf of the individual? See none. Chris, if you'd like to join us in front and, and say a few words and give us a background. Aloha.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. My name is Christian West, and I've been nominated for the Hawaii Tourism Authority, and I'm here today to answer questions or any concerns that folks may have.
Thank you. Anybody, any questions from the committee?
Well, I'll go ahead and start, to be fair. You heard my question earlier about balance, and I think you also said that in your questionnaire. So, and you've been serving since July, June?
Since July.
Okay, so you had a little bit longer time than previous Lisa. So what do you think about the balance and how the budget is being parceled out?
You know, I have, I come with a, I think, a unique perspective on the board, where, you know, born and raised local boy. The only representative labor on the table with, with many managers. And native Hawaiian. I was very surprised to see the diversity of the budget and how it was split up. I was happy to see that, I was happy to see the diversity of where the money went, or is going. I still have some questions myself on, on the effectiveness of where, you know, some of the budget is directed, and, and I hope to be able to, to be that unique voice that maybe can, can help to steer and use our funds properly as a taxpaying member of the state of Hawaii as well. It's something that I think we all have, we all have skin in the game on it, you know, and I know that there's been a lot of questions, and I know that you go right into the hot seat. But as a, in, in my day job, I'm in the hot seat a lot, so it's something that I believe I can handle, and I'd be willing to ask the tough questions.
So Christian, you, HTA has been through ups and downs. We have been through dedicated funding for a long time, and that funding has gone away. There's been all kinds of changes going on. And what direction do you think HTA is going in right now? Do you think they're going in the right direction? Do you think they need to look changes?
Well, I, I, as a person before me had stated that I'd be lying if I didn't say that I identify some bureaucracy there that, that maybe we have to cut through, but I mean, I guess that's kind of something that, that is evident everywhere we go, for the most part. You know, we're, we're without a, a full-time or an actual, we have a president now that is in acting, and, and I'm a firm believer in leadership. And without, with the lack of leadership, it's hard for us to move forward. And I think there's some, some housekeeping that needs to be taken care of quickly. And that being done, I, I feel positive that we can begin to make a difference. I don't know if that answers your question.
When do you think you're going to have this leader?
You know, tomorrow would be nice, but I believe that there's a, a pig now that's, that's tasked with finding the right person for the job. To be honest, I'm not quite, I couldn't give you an exact date, you know, but I know that we have a committee actively looking to, to fill the position.
So are we looking at a month, two months, a year? I mean, because we've already been, how long have we been without a? Twenty-three, twenty-four, going on. Okay, so we're going on two years, almost two years.
Yeah.
And with no, no date in mind, or no, you have an idea like in six months, or? I mean, just a pig, what is a, I mean, a pig?
I don't disagree. I, I. Yeah.
Without lipstick.
I forgot, forgot what it stood for, I was, I would have used it correctly, but. Yeah, I, I, you know, I wish I could give you a definite answer on that. I know that.
Okay, but you're on the board. Shouldn't you have a good idea? I mean, if you don't, who else would, would have it?
I would hope so, but I'm a pretty honest guy, so I'd be lying to you if I gave you a date.
Okay, so as a board member, what are you doing to get this moving and get your folks, maybe that's a better question?
I think asking a lot of questions, and probably, to be honest, maybe not as much as I should be.
But how do you hold them accountable? See, that's the problem. We asked a lot of questions, just like in this room, we asked a lot of questions. But how do we hold accountability? And then what is, what, what happens if, if they're not accountable? I mean, there's no recourse, right? There's no, I mean, we don't, in, in government, we hardly fire anybody. I mean, it's very difficult. I'm not saying, I know, I'm not saying we should be firing anybody, but I'm just saying it's very difficult to have accountability. You know, we can ask the questions, but then what happens if there is, you know, they go, oh, I don't know. Oh, I forgot. Oh, sorry, right? And then you go, okay, and then that happens again. I mean, being here as long as I have, I've heard all the excuses, and I see it happening over and over and over again, so. It just frustrates me.
Hundred percent. I, I, I agree wholeheartedly. Again, in my day job, I, I get questioned all the time. I'm being held responsible, responsible to sixteen thousand members and their families, you know, and it's a heavy burden to bear. And having answers to questions is very important to ease people's minds and to, you know, if you don't, if you don't control the narrative with the truth, it gets filled in, as we've seen. It gets filled in, right? And I believe that I could do more to push, you know, in there, but again, finding my way and my place on the, on the, on the board has been part of my, so to speak, mission. And definitely, I'm looking to, I want to have someone that we can follow, someone that we trust. And sometimes that takes a little time, but shouldn't take two years. Again, I, I'd be just guessing if I gave you a date, but I understand the concern, and I feel, and I share the same concern.
Okay, one last thing I'm going to say to you and to Lisa is that it's one thing to ask the question, another thing to get the answer, but to know whether or not that answer is, is in fact true. Right? I mean, a lot of times, if you don't know what, what's going on, and they, you get given an answer, and you accept it, and then find out later that that was false. And that's what makes our job hard, my job hard. I kind of almost have to know the answer before I ask a question, to know whether or not, you know, they're, they're telling me the truth, they're being accountable, and we're going to be getting what we want. So a lot of times, you know, this, and I've told this when I was the Chair of Tourism to HTA members, is it's not just attending a meeting and voting. A lot of times, you have to research some of the things that are on there to find out what's really happening, and then whether or not staff is in fact giving you the correct information, or whether or not they're in fact doing what they're supposed to be doing. And how do you know that? Because you're not monitoring them day to day, right? And therein lies the problem. So it does require time. And so I, I hope that you guys understand what that time commitment is when you stand on the board, because, you know, we know you don't get paid, and we appreciate you willing to serve. But if you do serve, then we hope that you will put in that kind of time and effort in order to hold the entities and the staff accountable for what's being done.
Absolutely. You know, I, I share with our staff that we have currently, and, you know, I tell them what's unique about where we are, who we work for, is you hear it all the time when people say, you know, I go to work for the man, or I go to work to make someone else a lot of money. But every day I wake up, I get, I go to work for the people, like literally, local working families here in Hawaii. And that's a, that's a heavy burden, but I love my job. I love to fight for our families, to keep them here in Hawaii. And so holding people accountable, some that I probably may be sitting on the board with, is something that, that's my job every day. So I don't have a problem, you know, asking the tough questions. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Wakai.
Congratulations on your nomination, Chris. And I want to follow up on that last response, because I loved what you said about you go to work every day to look out for. to look out for local families. When you look at tourism today, it's a $21 billion industry. Most of that is fueled by hotels. We have the highest ADR rate in the nation in Hawaii. And we know that all of the hotel chains in Hawaii are owned by mainland or outside investment firms. So as we grow tourism, how do we make sure that it's not just investment firms and Wall Street tycoons that are benefiting from tourism, but to the people you just said? How are local people really going to take a bigger share of the benefits of the growth in tourism?
Thank you for that question. Amazing question. And, you know, I may be a little biased, but I think we have organizations, unions as we see here today, that our job is to fight for local working families every day and to argue what their fair share is. Every day we battle, we battle with these corporations to let them know that the difficulties that it is being a local person, you know, with the rising costs in Hawaii. And finding that, so to speak, sweet spot on the bat where our, our local people can continue to stay and work here in Hawaii, the place that we were, we were born and raised. And in my opinion, and I have a strong opinion about it, or if I want to raise my children here, I should be able to have the opportunities to do that. So when we have companies that try to be neutral about it, or when we have companies that are making their money here in Hawaii or don't necessarily reside here, I think that's where organizations like ours come into play to make sure that, you know, it's not just a place where people come in and exploit our resources and our local people to make money and not to leave their share back here with our workers. Trying to stay kind of neutral on it, but I'm pretty passionate when it comes to fighting for our local families. It's my job.
It's all of our jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? So I just wanted to say thank you, Chris, for stepping up. I know you have a busy life, a busy schedule. I wanted to, you know, highlight some of the things that you have done when we had the fires in Lahaina. I know that it was you guys that took the lead on really standing behind your workers, you know. We had a meeting in Lahaina, which, you know, I brought up earlier with Lisa. And at that time, the understanding was that it was more about the jobs of the people and about the tourism industry and whether or not they would have jobs. And I wanted to commend your team because, you know, the fact that they wanted to come there and literally protest this meeting for businesses and the response to them where we're trying to figure out whether or not these businesses will be operating based on what happened with the fires. And you guys kind of, you know, took the initiative to wait to see where these businesses were. And then, you know, a conversation was had. But I want to commend you guys and your team, you know, which is why they've had the support of, I believe, a very good union as yourselves with ALW. That you guys stood up for them in every other situation. You demonstrate leadership. And I was hoping to follow up on a question that Senator Kim had earlier. If we took the narrative and you were to do the narrative and we were to find that leader, sometimes we don't have to look so far around us, but we can just look in the mirror. And I'll leave it at that. And thank you for your time. Next up, let's head on to GM 600. Somebody for consideration and confirmation to the Stadium Authority nominee Eric Fujimoto for a term to expire June 30th, 2028. First up, Chris Sarayasu, interim stadium manager.
Thank you, Chair, and Vice Chair. Standing in support.
Thank you. Next up, Director Tokioka, back with Dibed. Thank you. Next up, Ryan Andrews in support. And anybody else wishing to testify on the appointee? Seeing none, Eric, please join us in the front and thank you for being here. Is this like your fourth time walking in this building or just a second?
Yeah, it's probably my fourth time, period, walking through the building.
Well, thank you for wanting to serve.
Hi, thanks for inviting me here.
So if you just give us a little background about yourself, you know, we have your resume and the questions that we sent to you, so just introduction and quick background.
Local boy, born and raised, graduated from Pearl City High School, went to college on the mainland, came right back and started working in small business since 1993. And this is my 30th year in kind of owning my own company. And I live in Aia, I raised my two boys in Aia. Right outside of my picture window is Aloha Stadium. And so you kind of get reminded of the mission per se each and every day.
Thank you. Okay, members, questions for the appointee? Senator Waukeah.
Congratulations on your nomination.
Thank you.
In your questionnaire response, you talk about how you appreciate and, you know, you support the PPP approach being taken for the stadium. But we know that PPP approach right now is having some struggles and that Stanford Carr and his team have missed deadlines. How confident are you that this PPP program will all come together and then come June 30th, we're going to have a signed project agreement?
So I can't, I can't speak for Stanford, but as far as the people on the committee, I'm not in the room at the time that these negotiations are occurring, but Brennan is the individual that is. And I would have confidence that he's the right person to handle on the procurement side of where we're at. If you want to speak on the positives of where we are today, I think that we have a local developer that understands our culture. He's proven that, you know, he delivers on houses that can be affordable to people here in Hawaii. And I would hope that, you know, he can be responsible enough to see what's in front of him and the opportunities that have been given despite some of the costs, you know, that are, that have been, he's been public about. I would argue that from my perspective, I would try to build a collaboration that I've done in the past to try to find a win-win as best we can.
So considering he's missed many milestones, other than just hope, is there anything that you're going to put in front of him that these are specific deadlines that have to be met? And if not, then we're going to, we're going to part ways?
So I hear the concern and what we did as action is, I joked about the fact that this might be my second or third time here, but last week we had a meeting with Stanford and the governor and of which, you know, there was, you know, people in the room trying to find that common ground so that, you know, the, his team and the state's team could come to an agreement. He, that discussion had occurred and I could hope that, you know, he follows through on that.
Thank you. Senator Kim, question?
Going back to the basics, so Eric, why, why do you want to serve on the authority? And did you initiate it or did somebody nominate you or how did that come about?
2020 COVID situation. You know, I had, at that time it was Governor Ege who had considered the nomination. I guess you could just go back to the fact that when I first had the Senate nomination, you know, I had spoken about the fact that there was a lot of memories created that I view Aloha Stadium as a place that created a lot of happy places, happy smiles, happy memories that we will stand on. I think it's bigger than the University of Hawaii. I think it's a part of our community. I think that when our community does well, you know, we feel good. The University of Hawaii contributes to that seven days out of the year. And I think things like state football games and band presentations and graduations, it's a place that Neighbor Island students and families, you know, aspire to come to. I just kind of can remember how I grew up pretty fond of the stadium and I would hope that, you know, we can offer that to the next generation.
So is this your first appointment or is this reappointment?
Reappointment.
Oh, it's a reappointment. So you were first appointed when? I'm sorry, I didn't see.
2020.
2020, okay. So in, when was the stadium declared unfit and closed down?
So in 2020. It was like in my second board meeting. I sat in there and it was like, oh, okay.
Okay, so you're on the board then. Do you think it was appropriate that they closed it down as they did and didn't give any notice? Didn't give the university notice? None of us was aware? I mean, I know it's, it was a health and safety issue. And for years we were saying that, and I remember we proposed to Lingo because we flew up and went to the Denver Bronco Stadium and proposed that we put together a stadium back then, which she turned down. And year after year, each governor turned down the monies we put in for repair and maintenance to the point where we were, we were at the point of, you know, health and safety. But I would think that the Stadium Authority would have had a lot more notice or aware that this would be coming down the line so people could prepare. What was your thoughts back then?
As the first time appointee in the second meeting, I didn't have much thoughts back then. I will be accountable for that decision, however, going forward. As far as looking at, you know, what's in front of us, I think that we do have to keep that, words like communication and accountability much better to the stakeholders that are on us.
When you say much better, what do you mean by much better?
Well, I think when you're looking at how that was communicated to the university back in 2020, that's how I would reference that statement, that in hindsight could have been communicated better.
Okay, so since that time and now, and you've been on the board all these years, how have you effectuated that? What have you contributed? What have you accomplished?
I think that what might have gone underreported is I've been in front of four different governors to get us to this point today. I've tried to educate some of the strengths that are going on at the stadium right now. So, you know, through COVID, they've become cash flow positive. You know, they maintain a operating cash flow as far as the opportunity that NACID provides is that I think the conversation should be framed equally, not just on the stadium, but also to that of the amount of housing that's going to be proposed. You know, there's 70 plus acres of property that can be used for housing. And at this point, it's up to the developer to decide. However, you know, estimates are, you know, saying that they'll be building housing that is workforce affordable to those to be built in an opportunity zone, which provides some opportunity there.
I have a hard time understanding, I mean, it's proposed. We haven't seen even the ground dirt being rolled over. So I'm not sure that it was any kind of accomplishment. And right now, I mean, we have no idea if the stadium is going to get built. We have no idea that we're going to have all these housing. So again, what do you think we've accomplished by being on the board? Because it seems like we're still in limbo and chaos as far as whether or not we're going to have a stadium. And not just stadium, I mean, you guys, you are the Stadium Authority. You talk a lot about housing and yes, it's a master plan. But your main, your main mission is to, for us to have a stadium and for you to manage and maintain a stadium. So with that being said, you know, your role as a member on the authority, how have you moved forward on this or contributed? All we have is since you've been there is the shutdown of the stadium and plan, you know, the sky plan of all this grandeur, but with nothing.
That's true, that I think that the opportunity that presents itself for the current board is one of transformation that'll go from a stadium that's inoperable to 99 acres that could generate general excise tax, jobs. I think it would be high-paying jobs if they can follow a vision of the fact that the property has an opportunity zone impact.
Okay, but Eric, the developer is projecting that the project's going to cost 100 to 250 million dollars more than what money's been given by the legislature. And everything he's proposed at this point, gambling and so forth, has not gone forth. So, I mean, in our minds, in my mind, I don't see that we're any closer to that. And yet, as a Stadium Authority member, you seem to be thinking, we're going to, all of this, and yet we have nothing. I mean, look at it now, we have 200, you have 350 million dollars to build a stadium. Is that going to build us a stadium?
350 million is a pretty good start towards that stadium. And I think that, you know, what I don't understand that, you know, I need to understand further is, you know, Stanford's position currently as he's negotiating with the project team on, you know, to understand, you know, how to come up with that shortfall.
Okay, what would, what would you do if you had to come up? I mean, he's tried everything, gambling. He wants to get more money from the ledge, come up empty. I mean, you know, he's not going to use his own money on that. And so, you know, getting other people on the mainland to donate, I mean, there's not a whole lot of more options. And so I'm worried about, you know, the board and realistically, where are we going? I mean, it's been how many years already? And it doesn't look like it's going to come to fruition in the near future.
I don't, I don't have here, you know, with an honest discussion in the sense where I haven't, you know, been face to face with Stanford to really speak to a specifics.
Okay, but you've been on the board for a while, right? As you said, 2019, right? 2019. And you've never met with them? I mean, you didn't ask? I mean, as board members, you're supposed to call them in because you want to know as well? I know you got Brennan, but, I mean, you're each confirmed individually. You have your own individual responsibilities to us when you say you're going to do this job. So I'm shocked that he's not-
Well, I think that in the chronology, right? You know, so in January or February, Stanford is named as the AHDP. And, you know, he's presented at that time before the board, of which the conversations from then till now was through the, I guess they call it like a project oversight, you know, trying to get this to the RFP. I'm not in the room at, in those communications. So, you know, in terms of that specifics, I think that that would be probably best for Brennan or the stadium manager.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry that I don't have those answers.
It's important and, you know, I think as a board member, you have to exert yourself more. I'm sorry.
Noted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. So let me just make this really quick. Is there an opportunity for the Stadium Authority realizing that enterprise zone designation exists to bring in investment? Do you look at that as an opportunity to, the additional funding of the 350 million that it would, I don't know, let's see, lure, but encourage outside investment monies to complete the stadium and the surrounding entertainment area?
Yes, yes. The enterprise zone and opportunity zone provides-
And can you tell me why? In 30 seconds, can you tell me what would be that lure?
I think that private money will seek tax-free.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for wanting to serve. Okay, you can go back to your question.
Thank you.
I gotta get to this. Thank you. Okay, next up, submitted for consideration and confirmation of the Stadium Authority Governor Tarr nominee Andrew Pereira. First up, Chris Sarayasu on behalf of Stadium Authority, Aloha Stadium.
Thank you, Senator, in support.
Thank you. Next up, James Tokioka, Director of Dibed.
Dibed stands on his testimony in support.
Thank you. Mufi Hanaman, Hawaii Tourism Authority in support. Anna Tuyasofo in support. Operating Engineers Local 3 Mitchell Tinans Tainans, Hawaii Regional Council of Carpenters in support. Kirk Calo in support. Randy, Ryan Andrews in support. Kristi Lonnie in support. And Michael Yosua in support. Tracy Tonaki, Dr. Hortem President in support. Stephanie Sakamoto in support. Connie Mitchell in support. Paul Lam, individual support. Anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Seeing none, Andrew, can you please just introduce yourself? And we will start with your line of questioning. Thank you for wanting to serve.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, members. Andrew Pereira, I've had the pleasure of working with the majority of you in a professional capacity and my former role as reporter. Just got to know Senator DeCoit recently. Had a very good meeting with her. Wasn't born and raised in Hawaii, but been here since 1991. Came here with $500 in my pocket, so I know the struggle of working families. It's real. And through a lot of hard work and stick-tootiveness, was able to build a life for myself. And through a lot of hard work and stick-to-itiveness, was able to build a life for myself. Had two children, born and raised in Hawaii. They've graduated college. Unfortunately, they're on the continent right now. But my daughter is finishing up her residency in psychiatry and she wants to come back and, you know, lessen that burden for our healthcare providers. So that's a good thing. I see the new Aloha Stadium Entertainment District as vital to this community. I see it as the heart of this community, has a long storied history and we need a place to gather and to celebrate life together. And I think my, my main responsibility as a board member is the fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayer and making sure that those tax dollars are stretched as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Senator Kim.
Yeah, I've been wanting to do this for a long time. You've been asking us the questions for a long time. Now we get to ask you the question.
Yes. Thank you, Senator.
To be serious. So you've heard the conversation and the questions and, you know, I know I ask these pointed questions, but I think it's important because it is our taxpayers' dollars. And so you've been serving on the board at all or?
Since June 28th was the notice of my appointment. So I've been close to 10 board meetings now.
Okay, so you've been serving, so I can ask these questions. So how do you think this whole process has, has occurred and where are we now? And then the same question that I ask about how close are we to coming to fruition?
Well, fortunately, Senator, we took, you know, one step forward and then we took two steps back with the change in design plans. At first it was a design, build, operate, finance, maintain. And now we switched to a D-bomb model, so design, build, operate, maintain. So there was a transition period between the two plans and in my view, the stadium should have been built during COVID. We have SDSU that built Snapdragon Stadium during COVID. So that's an opportunity cost. I think it's, it's on all of us that we lost that opportunity. Construction costs have increased 30% since the beginning of COVID. And so we would have had a lot more stadium for the 350 million should we have done it during COVID when it should have been done, in my opinion. As far as where we've gotten so far, we've selected a preferred offer, AHDP. And that's from three.
Emergency has been reported in this building. Please cease operations and leave the building utilizing the nearest exit or fire exit stairway. Do not use elevators. Repeat, do not use elevators. Attention.
Okay, you're gonna have to just speak over him.
Emergency has been reported in this building. Please cease operations and leave the building utilizing the nearest exit or fire exit stairway. Do not use elevators. Repeat, do not use elevators.
I know we have a 2:45 cutoff time, hard stop. So I guess it's just, you know, instead of going over where we're at, we have to leave?
Recession. Okay, starting again.
Okay, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna summarize. I just hope, Andrew, that as a board member, you're going to hold not just the authority itself accountable, but also staff accountable for where we're going. And, you know, there's a lot of, lot of issues that is still out there and hope you just don't rely on your fearless leader. But as a board member, I think you also have that responsibility.
Absolutely, Senator. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Senator Wakai.
Congratulations, Andrew.
Thank you, Senator.
I've enjoyed working with you in our previous life in TV.
Likewise.
Also enjoyed working with you when you were doing the PR and messaging during some very tough times, right? I mean, we're in the situation we're in partially because government had all this wishy-washy back and forth. We had to endure a previous governor who didn't care about doing stadium PPP, wanted to do a design and build. So that caused much of the delays and why we're kind of up on, on a deadline today. But now, when you were nominated and then moved over to PRP, I was very excited about that relationship. But can you tell me of all of the construction unions, all of whom are going to benefit from the construction of stadium and ancillary development, why the carpenters union is pretty mediocre and lukewarm about their support for the stadium?
I think, Senator, the, the carpenters union, which PRP represents in addition to 250 general contractors, is focusing its attention on, on what's in front of it. So there's some legislation that is supporting this legislative session and that's taken up a lot of energy. But as far as, you know, actually supporting the stadium, I think that support is there through our union members that, you know, are big fans of, of UH, obviously in sports. But as far as maybe being more vocal, I think they're waiting for the June 30th deadline and whether there's an actual master agreement signed with AHDP and the state. And then I think once that, you know, comes to fruition, then you'll see the support in earnest and very vociferous support.
But at that point, we don't need your support, right? You're going to get the jobs once the P, the project agreement. We need your support now when we're in this kind of back and forth. But you're kind of absent from amongst the trades. I mean, the basins are out there, the ironworkers are out there, Ivy W's out there. But the carpenters are nowhere to be found in all of the legislation that is being donated about for support for the stadium.
I'll definitely take your concerns to the head of the carpenters union, Senator, and it's a discussion that I look forward to having. And I think you're correct that maybe our support could be a little bit stronger on, on that respect. And obviously, any support that we can give to the project is, is warranted because we're talking about 12,000 construction jobs that could be created during the construction of NASID and the surrounding 78 acres of development. So your, your point's well taken.
And as was mentioned to Eric earlier, I mean, Stanford Carr has missed multiple deadlines. And we have less than four months for him to figure out like how he's going to finance this thing, what exactly the specs are for the stadium, as well as the ancillary development. As a board member, what have you done to hold Stanford accountable?
I've had conversations with Stanford and I think we will get a stadium. The type of stadium we get, I think, depends on what I think Chair Morioka has spoken about, an aspirational stadium as opposed to a stadium that's in front of us with the funding that's available. So I think we will get a stadium. What that stadium looks like, I think, depends on funding mechanisms that may come to fruition or not. But with the 350 million that's there and I think there's been discussions of 100 million in private capital coming in for a total of 450 million. Not quite a Snapdragon level stadium, but something that could be a starter stadium that we could add to in future years. Something that could be proud of for that amount of money. But again, I wish we had done this during COVID. The construction costs would have been a lot less, but that ship has sailed. However, I do think that we are going to get a stadium, but whether it's the aspirational stadium or the stadium that's before us now with the funding that's available remains to be seen.
Thank you. Seeing no other further questions, I want to move right into decision-making. First up, HB 934 HD1 relating to Hawaii Broadband and Digital Equity Office. Transfers to Hawaii Broadband and Digital Equity Office from Department of Business Economic Development Tourism to the Office of Enterprise Technology Services. In the Department of Accounting and General Services, it establishes the Broadband and Digital Equity Special Fund and appropriates funds effective 7/1/3000 HD1. Amendments to improve and strengthen the bill incorporate the recommended changes made by the lieutenant governor in testimony. Also remove the references to telework in the bill. Add the language for the digital navigator positions that are contained in SB 1061 SD1. Members, any discussion? Senator Fukunaga.
You know, I think the, the amendments requested by YNI Coast Comprehensive, you know, deserve consideration because in many respects, for rural communities, you know, a lot of what they depend on with perhaps not, you know, the same as cable or fiber types of services are really important in the community. So I hope you'll consider the amendments being proposed by YNI Coast Comprehensive.
So what I'm going to do is I'm going to add that in the committee report. I do know that after careful consideration of that funding, that that funding was never meant for infrastructure funding, but it was meant for more of the outreach on the navigator and to help those communities in, in those rural areas. There is a separate part of funding, as the lieutenant governor alluded to, on infrastructure under NTIA.
No, this is not necessarily for infrastructure, but in terms of services currently being delivered.
So, so within that, the services that can be delivered will be delivered. But I will incorporate them to the committee report for the next chair to consider. Thank you, Senator Fukunaga. Any other discussion? Seinan Vice Chair for the vote. Chair goes aye.
I vote yes, Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Kim?
Aye.
Senator Awah?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next up, HB 97 HD2 relating to travel insurance. Establishes a new regulatory framework for the sale of travel insurance in the state, including licensing and registration requirements for limited lines travel insurance producers effective 10/1/3000 HD2. Amendments to incorporate amendments made by DCCA for consistency and licensing requirements by striking the clause on page 22, lines 19 to 21. Any discussion? Senator Kim.
Senator, I don't believe that we need this measure at this time. I mean, we, the response from DCCA was just, you know, she couldn't definitively just say why we needed this, just because it's being asked. I don't think there's a problem just because other states have adopted it. I don't think they made a good enough case, so I cannot support this measure.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seinan Vice Chair for the vote. Chair goes aye.
I vote yes, Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Kim?
No.
Senator Awah?
No.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next up, HB 448 relating to technology enablement. Appropriates funds to Hawaii Technology Development Corporation to assist small business, including those related to tourism sector with technology enablement, enablement effective 7/1/3000 HD1. Amendments, the bill already has appropriation blanked out and a defective date, so we can pass this bill out as is. Any discussion? Seinan Vice Chair for the vote. Chair goes aye.
I vote yes, Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Kim?
Aye.
Senator Awah?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next up, HB 455 relating to small business loan. Establishes the Hawaii Startup Business Loan Program and establish the Hawaii Startup Business Loan Program Special Fund. Requires DBED to submit annual report to the legislature regarding the program. Appropriate funds effective 7/1/3000. Amendments is to pass this bill with an SD1 by making any necessary technical amendments. Also incorporate the concerns raised by BNF and Attorney General in the committee report. Any discussion? Seinan Vice Chair for the vote. Chair goes aye.
I vote yes, Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Kim?
Aye.
Senator Awah?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next up, HB 1405 relating to permits. Establishes specific deadlines within facilitated application process to obtain a permit and requires, you know, there has been much questions on this, on this measure. I believe this measure needs a lot of work. And, you know, I think this, during the interim, is a time when this measure should identify what permits, under what program or construction and so forth. So with that, I am going to defer this bill indefinitely. Thank you. Next up, GM 511 submitting for consideration and confirmation to the Board of Directors of the Hawaii Tourism Authority, gubernatorial nominee Lisa Paulson for a term to expire 6/30/2027. Recommendation is to advise and consent. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Go ahead, Senator Awah.
Thank you. For the nominee, thank you for your service thus far. You come in many accolades. You, you know, clearly can do the job. About a month ago, we sat in this room, we, a bill came up, SB 1571. In it was something that I was very concerned with. It was a mindset and, and it was a term. And one person brought up a term that was removed. They removed the Hawaiian sense of place, turned it to a Hawaii sense of place. That person was Kumuhina Wong. That's who I'd like to see as the nominee here and with that, I'll be voting no. But there's nothing against what you're able to do.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seinan Vice Chair for the vote. Chair goes aye.
I vote yes, Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Kim?
Aye.
Senator Awah?
No.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next up, GM 615 submitting for consideration and confirmation to the Board of Directors of the Hawaii Tourism Authority, gubernatorial nominee Christian West for a term to expire 6/30/2028. Recommendation to advise and consent. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Senator Awah?
Fast one, and this is lighter. I got 2.5 concerns on this one. One governor appointed you. I'll look past that. Your union's a little bit left. I'll look past that. But Kamala schools wrestling to Ilani, I don't get that one. Chris and I are friends. I just have to put that out there. Thank you.
Not a problem, Senator Awah. Recommendation, advise and consent. Vice Chair for the vote. Chair goes aye.
I vote yes, Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Kim?
Aye.
Senator Awah?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next up, GM 600 submitting for consideration confirmation to the Stadium Authority gubernatorial nominee Eric Fujimura for a term to expire 6/30/2020. Recommendation to advise and consent. Any consider, any discussion? Seinan Vice Chair for the vote. Chair goes aye.
I vote yes, Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Kim?
Aye.
Senator Awah?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next up, GM 616 submitting for consideration and confirmation to the Stadium Authority gubernatorial nominee Andrew Perrer for a term to expire 6/30/2028. Recommendation is to advise and consent. Any discussion? Seinan Vice Chair for the vote. Chair goes aye.
I vote yes, Senator Fukunaga. Senator Kim?
Aye.
Senator Awah?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. And with that being said, thank you very much for being here. Thank you for volunteering to serve on these boards. And I wish you all the best of luck and please continue to stand up for what you guys believe is right and even if it means standing alone. So thank you. And with that, this hearing is adjourned. Mahalo.